Good evening, welcome to what is hopefully our last meeting of the year on this December 3rd, 2018, regular meeting. We have agendas available on the corner over here by Chief Gear if you'd like to follow along, or more D.C. counsel packet is available through the city's website. We also televise our meetings through that website as well as Charter Cable Channel 191. And if you get a chance to speak with council, you'd come to the podium up here and if you share your name with us, we'd be grateful for our record keeping. And also, if you have any cell phones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting is not interrupted. And with housekeeping taken care of, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alvarado.
Present.
Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
And if you join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is the consent agenda. We consider these items to be routine and we'll do them as a single vote unless a member of the public or a member of the council would like something considered separately. Those items include the approval of the minutes from the November 19th meeting, bills and communications to approve specifically the amount of $3,371,785.41 to item C to approve an extension of the DPDA funding agreement through June 30th, 2019, a final acceptance for Road 84 Safe Walking Route connection, final project acceptance for Rowena Chess School Crossing, also resolution on item F, number 3879, authorizing the city manager to execute a cost sharing agreement with Visit Tri-Cities for regional sports feasibility study. Item G, purchase of lighting and seating for our GESA stadium, specifically with Norpac seating for about $345,000. And item H is actually to cancel the meetings in the rest of December's as we should get everything done for the year tonight. Anything to pull off the agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
It's been moved and seconded by Ms. Barajas. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Watkins.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Serrano.
Yes.
Approved unanimously.
With that, we have a consent agenda. We go to item four, proclamations and acknowledgements. None listed. We go to item five, visitors out of their agenda items. Anybody here this evening want to speak to council on an item that's not further along on the agenda? And I'm not seeing any hands raised, so we're going to go to item six, reports from committees or officers. They attend a meeting or event they wish to share with council. Mr. Milne.
Yes, so on Thursday, I attended my Tri-DEC board meeting. And just to give you a heads up on the shoreline reconvenance, there was discussion that we need to get the different tribes involved. And they reported back that they are getting more tribe involvement and they have had meetings. And then on Saturday, I went to the Pasco Winterfest. It was really good. The dancing was good. The music was really good. And I want to say thank you to the Parks and Rec for putting on a good event. And I really enjoyed myself. And it was good.
Thank you, Mr. Milne. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to report that we had our meeting on Thursday with some of our local legislators. And I think that went really well, helped share kind of where the city's going and what we need out of the state. I think those meetings have been general, but the group meeting was certainly very productive. And the individual meetings that council member Serrano and I've had with several of the legislators, I think have also been equally effective. I think we just have one more meeting scheduled for in December with Senator Brown. And I think we'll hit most everybody with just a few exceptions. And I would like to applaud you, Mr. Mayor, for being so successful at rolling with the punches at the Winterfest. There was a number of technical difficulties that I think you very admirably handled. I think people had a really good time. And that was part of it, not a hindrance to it. So, thank you for your.
You're very kind. In between Bluetooth and wireless signals, I think we had an education. And I think you're exactly right. I understood that although the event started at 2:00 PM, we had folks on some occasions lining up at 1:30 for some events. And I think the people that did the face painting probably deserved extra pay. My understanding is they painted a lot of children's faces. So, neat to see a sequoia tree and a few tents can bring folks in our community down to an event. So, wonderful turnout as well. Any other reports? Would note, there's the general fund operating statement. Unless council wants to go through that, that's available for review. And we go on to item seven, hearings and council actions and ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. We have 2018 supplemental operating and capital budget. And we do budgeting. We do our best to predict and plan, but we usually have to make a little adjustment at the end of the year. How's our adjustment going, Mr. Zabel?
Well, as Director Sigdel mentioned last week, we have about a 1.8% variance. And you see the funds proposed for adjustment there. I think all in all, pretty well. Could get into more detail, but we did have a fairly detailed presentation last week. Nothing really new to add.
And with that, were there any other comments or questions from staff, council, before I believe I have to do, open up a public hearing on it because for this to be adopted later?
Just to note that it is a public hearing.
Okay. Well, with that, if there's anybody who's come down this evening who'd like to talk about our supplemental operating and capital budget, this would be your opportunity. Usually pro forma sorts of things, as Mr. Zabel pointed out, 1% is pretty close to the mark for predicting a year in advance. We do a second call and a third and final call. Nobody's raising their hands, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And would somebody like to make a motion or two? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4404, amending the 2018 annual operating budget of the city of Pasco by providing supplement thereto and by appropriating revenue received in excess of estimated revenues for the current year and by providing transfers and adjustment authority and further authorized publication by summary only.
I'll second.
Motion and seconded by Mr. Martinez. And any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And there's a second part to this. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4405, amending the 2018 annual capital budget for the city of Pasco by providing supplement thereto and further authorized publication by summary only.
It's been moved. And Mr. Alvarado, would you like to make the second on that one?
Second.
Second on that one. Any discussion by council on this? Hearing none. All those in favor of the second part, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Wow, we're moving through things quickly. So, we're going to, we'll see how we do on our next item related to the projects budgets ordinance, second reading. And this is also, Mr. Zabel?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, council. So, this is our biennial budget for 2019, 2020. And your previous workshop, we gave you about a two and a half hour presentation. And then I think we cut that down about an hour at your last meeting. And so tonight, I'm going to forego a presentation and save you another hour. But it is a public hearing. And we do have a couple options too. If you'll note that there's an option A and an option B that has to do with the ambulance utility. And so, there's a lot of things that tie together. You have the ambulance rates a little later in the agenda. But you're kind of sort of making the decision here from at least a budgeting standpoint.
So, there's a little bit of an order here.
Yeah, so there's some overlap here. And there's really, we need separate ordinances for the rates and the budget. So, it was, which one was the chicken and which one was the egg, basically, is how the order came.
Okay. Questions of staff? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, if I understand correctly, Mr. Zabel, then we will have to choose during, after the public hearing, we'll have to choose whether we go with option A or option B for the ambulance fund. And we'll be approving on, we'll be voting on one of those two options for the ordinance?
That's correct.
Do I need to include that as part of the motion?
I would specify which option.
I anticipate I would. I just wanted to make sure I had that down correctly. Thank you.
So, any other questions of staff before opening a public hearing on this? Hearing none. If there's anybody here this evening who's come down for this particular item, these are important items, so we do public hearings, just in case anybody would like to speak about them. And I'm not seeing any hands raised, but I'll do a second call and make the distinction to this is, this is our budget for a two-year cycle. This is also new to Pasco, that we usually do an annual budget. This is a little bit different, a lot more work. But it'll mean that we won't have to do quite so much next year. And I'll do a third and final call. Nobody wants to make a comment, so I'll close the public hearing. And Mr. Maloney, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to, I move for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 4401 for consider, and to be clear, option B, which is a 4% option for the ambulance fund, for consideration of the city of Pasco biennial operating budget for 2019 and 2020, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a second by Mr. Milne. Discussion on this. And just for, Mr. Serrano?
Go ahead, if you were.
I was just going to, since we were talking about it, the two options being that we could do a 7% increase that would be fully fund the, that particular section of the budget. But item four involves a shift heavily from the general fund, and I think a bit with the anticipation that we're, we have this fund better in hand and hopeful that we don't have to supplement it in the future. Is that a fair summary, Mr. Zabel?
I think that's a fair summary.
Okay. Mr. Serrano?
I think that was kind of along the lines of my comments. While I'm in favor of a 4% increase, I also have heavily weighed on option A where we'd seek the full payback, which kind of makes some assumptions that we'd get the GMT reimbursements, I believe. Is that correct?
It assumes 1.3 million in reimbursements from GMT.
Yeah. And so, I think that's kind of where we're laying a little bit in the hands of someone else. And while, again, I'd prefer to go the lower route, I don't know, this one's a tough one for me. I think, I think I can be supportive of either. So, I think I'll just roll with option B. But I do think we need to be very careful and look at this one very clearly next year. Even though we're adopting a biennial budget, we'll revisit this at some point. So, we just need to pay really close attention to this one.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes, thank you. And I want to be clear that I've also struggled on this one. I think they're both have their pros and cons. And I think a number of folks have heard me struggle with this one rather vocally. And at the end of the day, where I'm kind of coming in on is, we have done some adjustments to property taxes and the way some of our things are working out for this budget. And I appreciate the opportunity to keep some more in people's pockets at this time and adjust as we need to in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. And that is always the dilemma. And just I haven't been on council, this has always been a thing every year. And I appreciate staff's interest in trying to make this a bit of a hybrid approach. 7% is a bit of a big adjustment, so forth, certainly better from a public perspective. And if everybody is realizing they may have to talk about it again next year and it's not a completely resolved issue, option B makes sense, so I'll support it. Any other thoughts? Ms. Barajas?
I was just putting it off because I pretty much agree with everyone else. Option B is the best option, in my opinion, currently. And this is just taking into consideration the increase for those individuals that may not be able to afford a 7% increase. But I agree, this is something that would need to be revised and improved, again, taking into consideration the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barajas. Any other thoughts? With that, I'll ask for a voice vote. And this is the first part, so it's the second reading with option B for the biennial operating budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And with that, there is a second part of this that I imagine doesn't have to have a specific option, so it's just the straight motion. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 4402 for consideration of the city of Pasco biennial capital projects budget for the year 2019 and 2020, and further authorize publication by summary only.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Alvarado. Discussion on this? Mr. Alvarado?
Yeah, I would just want to take a moment to commend city staff, especially Ms. Sigdel and our city manager. I know that they've been working pretty hard. And that was a pretty beefy binder. For us to review, we would say, yeah, to review is one thing, but to put it together. So, I would say, you know, having little experience with budgets, but the limited that I have, I was just pretty blown away by the amount of work that I know went in through that. And the conversations I've had with staff, they feel the same way. So, just want to commend city manager and everyone else's work in this.
Mr. Zabel?
If I could respond, we do have three very important people in the process sitting here for our senior accountant staff. And yeah, they did just a great job of putting all this together. Matter of fact, they can answer any question you can throw at them tonight.
[laughing]
They were even educating me a little bit before the meeting, just a couple, a couple things.
Tempting.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Zabel, because sometimes you sit here and you go, who are those folks? There is something a little further in the agenda. And so, it's good to see you. And yeah, I think all of us are going to agree with Mr. Alvarado that it was clear by the sheer size, depth, and then it's a two-year thing, that a lot of work by your department. So, thank you for doing that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. How about the second motion? All those in favor of it signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And just to point out, that is a big one for this council to do. We're not quite to the end of the meeting yet, but by doing that, you're setting this city to be on a predictable course that staff are going to be able to work for the next several years well. And good job. And I've seen it where it's not been quite as painless. And I'm sure Mr. Zabel has in his years as cities. This qualifies as a fairly unpainful one. So, again, congratulations and thank you. Okay, we're going to go to section eight on the agenda. We do have a special permit tonight related to a, item A is a location of a community service facility, a level two in a CR zoning district. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And this special permit or conditional use permit involves a community service facility, the second level. And those facilities require a special permit in almost all zoning districts. This particular application is located at 3221 West Court Street, and it involves an assessment, treatment, and counseling center for chemical dependency. The planning commission conducted the hearing on this just a few weeks ago, November 15th, and has forwarded a recommendation of approval to city council. And no appeal of that has been received.
As well, it's also quasi judicial items, so that we're acting on whether to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission. Any questions or a motion? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 3881, granting a special permit for the location of a community service facility, level two, at 3221 West Court Street.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Barajas. Discussion? Hearing none. All those, oh, go ahead, Mr. Alvarado.
I, just a clarification, I, reading through the packet, maybe I was going through it a little fast, but I was trying to figure out the difference between a level one, level two, and what's the differentiation there, just for my own.
Level two facilities involve things that are very, typically very difficult to locate in terms of public sentiment. This, not necessarily this facility, but a crisis center might be, would be a level two facility. A mission would be a level two facility. Any kind of incarceration facilities, work release centers, level two facilities. The level one facilities are those that you most commonly find in actually residential neighborhoods, public schools, hospitals, just about, fire stations. So, there's a level of difference in the perhaps intensity of activity associated with the use.
Thank you for indulging my question. And looking through the packet and the, and looking at the video, there seemed to be not a lot of public opposition to this, definitely for this.
Okay. Mr. Serrano?
Well, I'll jump off that. And so, is the purpose of the facility, the reason for this conditional use permit here? I mean, it seems that it fit the commercial zone. Am I missing there?
It does fit in commercial zones, but it, even though it's in a commercial zone, it still does require the conditional use permit in the C1 zoning districts.
So, simply because it is this type of facility, it requires that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, yeah, because like I said, you know, looking at the structure and the use and parking and all that, it seems, you know, the typical land use issues seem appropriate. Okay, just wanted to, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving resolution 3881, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And with that, we go down to item 8B, proposed budget utility rate adjustment. Mr. Zabel?
So, as council recalls from the discussion last week, and the budget presentation increases, inflationary level increases are needed in particularly water and sewer. Ambulance, we've had quite a bit of conversation about already. Option B of this ordinance implements the budget option that council just previously authorized. So, staff's recommendation would be option B, which would include 3% increase for water, 4% for sewer, and 4% for ambulance.
And so, these are the ones that are tied with one option, would recommend going with that same option on this one?
That's correct.
Questions or a motion? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4406, option B, amending the Pasco municipal code sections 3.07.010 ambulance utility and 3.07.160 water utility and 3.07.170 sewer utility, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Serrano. Discussion? Mr. Maloney?
Yes, thank you. This is something from my education. When we look at some of the rates for, assumption we see the, we see the term surcharge, 90% surcharge, we see 60% or 50% surcharge. I'm unsure of what that means. Could someone help me understand? When we look at, for example, a residential unit, or when we're looking at electronic agenda page six?
Surcharges in, people who are not in the city will pay a premium for those services.
Is it, so is that additional on top of the listed rate, then? It'd be an additional adder to that?
Yeah, and if they get annexed in, they pay their regular rate. So, there's a little bit of, perhaps a little bit of an incentive there to be annexed in.
That's correct. That's correct. And there are reasons for that. I mean, it is, when we're operating utility on city streets, we're in charge of the permitting for it. We're in charge of a lot of things that have to do with opening the street, those type of things. If we're out in the unincorporated area of the county, you know, there's a lot more process to it, a lot more time that it takes, a lot more coordination with county public works department, et cetera.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good catch. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance 4406, option B, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Making a quick meeting of our, our quick meeting of our last one here, folks. We're going to go on to item C, Basin Disposal proposed 2019 rate increase. And we had a committee on this that included myself and Mr. Alvarado. I believe we're going to be able to recommend supporting this. I would just ask Mr. Strebel, any other thoughts since we had met with Basin Disposal and the committee meetings since then, or?
Nothing really, Mr. Mayor. I think it was clear to the committee that Basin Disposal goes through a highly regulated process for its non-city of Pasco customers primarily because the WTC regulates them in most of those instances. And because of that, they use the same approach and same form for preparing their rate increase when they approach the city. And the committee was able to walk through that process and see how the different cost centers are allocated within the business. We have reminded council of the increases that are proposed and how they would affect ratepayers for the single container that most property owners have would increase from 1969 to $20.58 per month. And then the senior discount container under this increase would go from 1028 to 983. And those would be, oh, yeah, excuse me, go up to 1028 from 983 and effective January 1st.
With that, any questions or motion? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the report on, of the committee on solid waste rates and the 2019 basin disposal service rates as proposed.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Serrano. Discussion on this? I would just note that, appreciate us doing a committee on this and would recommend that this council do take a look at the, all the details every time that there is a rate increase. It's, working with Basin Disposal, they have a very decent process. And following, of course, the state standard on the regulated side is a good model. Just, but since this one, those $20 rates, since it's applied across the system, is a significant item for the ratepayers of Pasco and deserves taking a look on it in an annual or whatever basis that Basin might consider changing those rates. So, just do, I would just suggest to keep doing that moving forward. Mr. Alvarado?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be part of that. And it was good to take, take a morning and just spend some time with what he was calling the secret sauce of BDI. And just the open book, being able to go and ask questions about their formulas and knowing that the WTC, it does regulate at a very, you know, high level. And they follow the rules, formulaic rules of how to, you know, do all the adjustments. And so, you know, following the consumer price index and all that. So, it was definitely an education for me just to see, you know, how a lot of these things come together. But just to know that if we had any questions, they were very open to just not only look at a number, but to look at any formula on how they got to that number in their Excel. I thought that was very good, very transparent, at least from my perspective. So, appreciated just having that access.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the basin disposal adjusted rate, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we did have a motion on that.
Yes.
Okay. So, and all those, all those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you Basin Disposal and working with us on that and continuing to provide quality service to the city of Pasco. Item D looks like to be a housekeeping issue related to amendments, revenue and finance. Mr. Strebel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it is indeed housekeeping. The city has maintained a couple of different funds for many years for tracking lodging taxes, primarily because the lodging taxes came into play at different times in the history of the city. The first was established for the track facility and then the second for the stadium, GESA stadium. And there are other lodging tax uses paid primarily out of the stadium fund, such as for Visit Tri-Cities and the Pasco Chamber, as well as the downtown Pasco Development Authority. As, over the years, the two taxes have been viewed the same and classified the same in the eyes of the state legislature. And so, there's no longer the need necessarily to maintain the two separate funds. And it's really prudent to combine the revenues into one fund and expend the lodging tax dollars from that fund as appropriate and as recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. We still propose to maintain the track and convention center funds for those specific expenses related to those facilities. But this, this really helps us to come into conformance with state law with respect to lodging tax dollars and will help us better track them in the future. So, we recommend the approval of the ordinance.
Questions of staff or a motion? Mr.? Mr. Alvarado, you had a question first, or you want to wait till a motion?
I'll wait till a motion.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4407, amending Sections 3.93 and 3.127, and creating Chapter 3.128 of the Pasco Municipal Code, and further authorize publication by summary only.
It's been moved, is there a second? Second by Ms. Barajas. Questions or discussion? Mr. Alvarado?
Yeah, so I very much appreciate seeing, you know, the, the state and our municipalities are leaving things that are ever evolving. So I guess my question is not so much about this specific item, but more about, you know, updating our municipal codes to match whatever changes in legislature. I don't know how often that happens, but what's our mechanism to ensure that, you know, we're, one, taking advantage of whatever changes are, that are happening in, in the state, or anything that we may be doing that perhaps has changed that we can no longer do? I don't know if that happens often and how often, and how do we catch that? Like, what's our mechanism for catching that? Is there a staff or that does that? Just, just curious.
Well, fortunately, we have a lot of mechanisms. We have the city attorney who's constantly reading through and making suggestions to staff about things that need to be updated. We have various newsletters that are sent by different organizations, municipal finance officers, for example, Municipal Research Services Center, Association of Washington Cities, Washington Cities Insurance Authority. All of them are constantly sending us newsletters advising us of changes that have occurred in state law so that we don't find ourselves, you know, running down the wrong path. Of course, we have the state auditor's office that if we do run down the wrong path and they smack us around and send us back up. So we have a lot, a lot of ways to remind us, hopefully the auditor is the last resort, but the, the newsletters and the organizations and the attorney's office really are the primary sources to keep us advised.
Mr. Strebel, it's also, or Mr. Curry, there's probably a bit of an art to the way municipal codes are crafted so that they're tolerant of some measure of change that might occur and then, but you also realize that you can't write a code that is never changing and completely of, of a state system. Is that, is that practical too?
Yes, I think so. For example, sometimes when we adopt things like the International Building Code, we'll sometimes include language as it exists or may be here and after amended. And so that helps to buy us a little bit of wiggle room when things may change for a while before we actually get to amending our own ordinance.
It's also possible too that, the, the magic threshold, is it worth the staff effort to go in and expend the resources and attorney's time to update those? At the same time, it's probably a, a matter of whether or not, somebody's probably not going to drive a truck through some little arcane difference in a word or two. We had the experience of where stuff changed dramatically and where we missed something.
Sometimes they drive a truck through, but, but we try and minimize the loss.
Through, through, there, that's where we get, so through the softball up, thanks for, thanks for the honesty, Mr. Strebel. Mr. Zabel?
I think, I do want to add one thing, because you're going to have a huge code revision effort hit you after the beginning of the year and something that our, our city clerk has identified early on in her time at the city and we've been working on it the last few years. And part of it is when you change one piece of the code, there's things all throughout the code and we're, we're working on that with hearing examined right now. You know, so there's a lot of work to go through and get all the things that are tied together, either directly or indirectly. And so you're going to see a pretty big effort next year and probably it's going to be split up in several different ordinances because just the title page is going to be at least a page long. And it's going to make some changes just to clarify what the city code is that might be conflicting actually within the code. So it's, it's kind of an ongoing effort that, that occurs all the time. But periodically, you do, you need, you do need to do a major purge like Daniella and city attorney are engaged in right now.
To borrow another analogy or metaphor, sometimes you smooth the carpet out in the room and then if the carpet's just that bumpy, it's time to replace the carpet. Is that it? Okay. With that, hopefully that's well answered, Mr. Alvarado? Okay. So back to the, I guess, the subject at hand then, we have amendments, municipal code related to revenue and finance. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance, in favor of ordinance number 4407, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item E, interfund balance, I believe related to a couple of actions we took before, I'm going to guess, recommend option B, Mr. Zabel, on this one?
Great staff report, Mayor. Yeah, it implements the budget the council just approved and it would, option B would obviously implement the adopted budget, would provide for a $2 million loan to the ambulance fund, 1.3 of which we anticipate to pay back in 2019 through GEMT reimbursements from the ambulance fund to the general fund. And then the other, remaining $700,000 would be forgiven and, and just brought in as a subsidy.
And once again, the, the fundamental principle here is when you do go across funds like this, the, the beneficiaries in one fund are largely the same as the other fund. So there is some, some flexibility here in the staff recommendation.
That, that is, you know, in this, in this particular case, because the ambulance is just such a general service across the entire city, as, as are the levying of taxes, it, there was a certain quid pro quo between the two that, that made a lot of sense, a little bit different than putting general fund money into sewer utility or the water utility or something like that.
Questions or motion? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 3880, Option B. I'm looking for nods. B, thank you. Authorizing an interfund loan to the ambulance fund.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Martinez. Any discussion on this one? Mr. Maloney?
I guess I'd just like to, to mention that, you know, one of the reasons why option B is so important to this is we went through this meeting tonight, I think we bumped up a lot of things by just a little and, and really was coming down to just how can we keep a little, soften that below a little bit? Because this is, it's pretty rough to go through this and look at just how much those dollars add up and that's taking some out of the general fund to, to help that is, is a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Any others? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution 3880, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And with that, we go to the final item on Section 9, Nonrepresented Wage and Salary Plans. Is that you, Mr. Zabel, or Mr.?
Strebel.
Mr. Strebel?
Counsel, you have before you a couple of ordinances that make adjustments to our nonrepresented personnel schedules for wages. The first is nonrepresented non-management and the second is for management salaries. The proposed increase to these two schedules is 3%, noting that the rate of inflation that we've been using to compare for other salary adjustments is CPI 3.2%. These two schedules are adjusted by that increase and then there are some special adjustments that are made within the schedules that we've highlighted for you. The GIS Administrator Position, Database and System Administrator Position, of which there are three incumbents, which are proposed to be in, adjusted to reflect market conditions in this very difficult marketplace of information services, technical positions. And then also our Safety Risk Program Administrator, which is a reclassification to include some additional responsibilities and based on internal and equity parity. So the non-management schedule includes that 3% increase plus those adjustments for those positions that are indicated to you. The salary schedule for management positions is likewise proposed to be adjusted by 3% with that COLA recommended. And then in addition, the schedule formalizes upgrading of a couple of positions which were earlier discussed with the council, first being the Deputy Chief Police, Chief of Police, which was upgraded from a captain position. We formally had two captain positions and transitions one of those positions to be the deputy police chief. And then the addition of Community and Economic Development Deputy Director, which is an upgrade from the Economic Development Specialist. So you have in front of you the dollar amounts for the changes as they're proposed for the 28 management employees and for the 94 nonrepresented employees of the city which are affected by this schedule. That doesn't include the couple hundred other organized labor employees, Fire Police and Public Works International Operation or Operating Engineers Union. And then we've suggested to you, counsel, that the sum which has typically been budgeted by the city for management merit adjustments, which are a one-time adjustment, they're not an ongoing adjustment that's added upon, but given in a year and then zeroed out and then have to be earned again in another year to, to maintain that or any semblance of it. That sum has been $50,000 since 2012, owing to some growth in the management team itself and in some differences in the salaries. We're proposing that that amount be adjusted by $15,000 in the coming year budget to $65,000. So with that, the, the two schedules, two different ordinances for your consideration and be happy to try and answer any questions.
Any questions or motion? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4408, providing for certain adjustments in the nonrepresented non-management wage plan beginning January 1st of 2019, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Serrano, discussion? Mr. Serrano?
Thanks for putting this together. One of the things I know we've discussed often is trying to make sure we're staying up to par. I've looked at some of the stuff, it mentions different cities, but how, I mean, is this helping close the gap in our neighboring cities in Benton County?
Well, I, I think as we've indicated in the agenda report, that we've been trying to close that gap for a couple of years. And as noted in the agenda report, we think that we've kind of reached that competitive level and we're trying to maintain that internal equity as well as competitiveness with, with other cities. We may not always be the top, but we're, we're trying to be right in the hunt.
Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, that we, we have been planning to get into next year a little bit. There's a few other classifications that we need to kind of look at a little more closely than we've talked about, for instance, some of the engineering classifications and others. We were able to quickly deal with the IT pieces because that was, that had already been underway a couple of months ago. So you'll, you'll probably see something from us after, not after the first of the year, but probably the second quarter of next year, a little more comprehensive look.
Okay. Thank you. I really appreciate that. I think, you know, one of the things that we as council and I know you as the executive staff are trying to say, you know, keep a plea to those who are working here, that we're doing our best to keep you well-funded. We appreciate your work and we don't want you to be in a position where you have to choose more money or being in a place you love. We're doing everything we can without breaking the piggy bank to make sure that you feel loved and that we are finding you as well as we can. So thank you again for your work and your dedication to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Serrano said, and I certainly echo those, those comments, I am, it's, it's essential that we as a city continue to have good employees and sometimes there, people do have to make that, that unfortunate decision of do I take care of my family or do I take care of my, my heart? And sometimes that's, that's a hard place to be. If we can make it a little softer, that's a little easier. I just want to also point out that there is nothing as damaging to a city or any organization as turnover. The loss of people can be, it's an unseen cost. You don't, you don't get that in a, in a budget report, you don't see that necessarily in your day to day, but it is absolutely something that destroys morale and the cost of, the cost of it is, it can be tremendous of just losing that institutional knowledge, the people who, who helped set up these systems and having to train some replacement is, it's, again, it may not be on a budget item, but it is expensive. So I just, just want to add that to Mr. Serrano's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Alvarado?
Again, more of a curiosity question. And so looking just at the increase and I did see in Section 2 that it's dependent upon satisfactory performance evaluations. And so based on that, is, is there a either/or, is it a 2.5 if perhaps it wasn't as good? How does that, is there a scale of that as far as performance? Is there a point system? Just curious.
Well, there are several different factors. Employees are evaluated on the basis of different functions that they perform and then they are evaluated on the basis of their skills, as well as their, I guess for want of a better term, initiative and attitude. So it's a, it's a pretty comprehensive evaluation and there, there is a schedule in the employee, employment evaluation ratings that says what constitutes a satisfactory evaluation. So how, how many areas that you can get a needs improvement in and still have a satisfactory evaluation? So that's all spelled out for the employees and for the managers.
Yeah, I figured that's pretty typical. Some organizations do it differently, so just, I guess for the sake of the, the meetings, you know, we're not giving everyone a raise, it's just more we're budgeting for that with the, knowing that there's a, you know, performance caveat to it. So I think that that's important, I guess, for the public to know as well.
Perhaps augmenting that, Mr. Alvarado, maybe another question too, and I don't know, might, might be a question from Mr. Zabel or if not, Mr. Strebel. Notwithstanding the, assuming we do the update to $65,000 for a merit pool, has the merit pool been fully used every single year or is that something that is variable from year to year?
I did not use it fully. I was within about 4% the first year, excuse me, four years ago. The last three years, I've been able to use it fully.
Okay. So in that, but that's a case that if you have an objective measure, that if people are not doing all the things possible, there is money that does get left on the table, so to speak.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's the, that's, that's, I think, an example of also why we hire a city manager that's in charge of the 390, do I remember? Am I remembering? What, what is the staff count, Mr. Zabel? Or anybody?
Pretty close to 400.
Real close to 400?
Yeah, it's between 390 and 400, yeah.
So City of Pasco has a lot of, a lot of folks doing a lot of services with it. So this, this pool is above and beyond, folks do something well above and beyond, they could tap into this, this relatively small pool when you're talking about 400 employees. Any other questions or thoughts? Hearing none then, we have first motion and that is ordinance 4408 for non-management wage plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously and there is a second item. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4409, providing for certain adjustments in the management salary plan beginning January 1st, 2019, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Serrano, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of 4409, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And with that, we are done with Section 8 on the agenda and I don't believe we have under, anything under nine or 10, which would take us to item 11, miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Zabel, would you like to start?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a few, actually fairly heavy items tonight. So first one, council's probably noted the flag's lowered and that's in respect for George W., or George H.W. Bush, our 41st president, they'll be lowered for 30 days as is appropriate for the passing of a President of the United States. So they'll be down a long time in case folks ask. Second, I did want to note Winterfest, the number of crowds. I mean, I, I actually had an opportunity to be kind of up in my office watching it most of the afternoon and I think this one, it's, it's a relatively new event, but I think it really solidified as a Pasco tradition now with this year. There's a lot of, a lot of folks there all the way through the afternoon into the evening, so exciting event. Next item, a little bit bittersweet for myself and the remainder of the senior staff team and- and probably the department, but Chief Metzger, chief for the past eight years, who's accomplished so much for the department and our city will be retiring in April. And a couple of comments I want to make, and we have a lot of time because we're talking about April, but the chief led an effort to elevate the department professionally and has been very successful at doing that, achieving a state accreditation and well down the path for national accreditation. The chief's been passionate about encouraging his staff in terms of staff development and formal education, whether it's, or advanced training on their part, and he's really, I think, created a culture of learning and professionalism. He led the department and I think provided leadership and, you know, we all lived through it through probably one of the most trying times, you know, our community has seen, at least in modern history. And I think as a result of that, our police, police-community relations are arguably stronger than they have ever been at this point in time. I think the chief did that. One of the hallmarks that I've seen the chief demonstrate time and time again is transparency. I have seen him be very forthright. Times where I might not have said it so plainly, the chief has and it's paid off. And his professionalism, it's allowed the department, I think, to forge some very strong relationships in the community, with community groups and even the ACLU. And I mention ACLU because, you know, this is an era where many departments are at odds nationally with the ACLU. And we have the ACLU actually talking about our department to other departments in the state. So as I said, much to say later. I know the chief would like to say a few words before I take all the air out of the room.
Chief?
He wants his chance to do that, so.
Well, he said the meeting got over early today, so I get a little more time to talk. Just kidding. Well, I do want to thank everybody, particularly Dave made a comment a couple of weeks ago when you were talking about his salary, about how certain senior staff could have left and didn't, and I'm one of those he was talking about. This is bittersweet for me. It's been a quick seven and a half years, but I've been doing this for 44 years totally with 27 as chief and six departments in three states. And I think it's time to turn it over to somebody else. I got a few thank yous that I really want to talk tonight about. The first one, Mayor, I really want to appreciate you. I can remember what Dave was saying back in 2015. I remember you and Dave sitting there in EOC going, what are we doing? What's going on? What's going to happen? And I really appreciated that during that entire time, you never questioned me or doubted what I was doing, even though I questioned and doubted myself a lot. That meant a lot to me and it meant a lot to the officers. And it meant a lot for the last council to support me and the department. And it meant a lot for this new council to come in and support, not just me and the council. I get the credit, but really they're the ones out there doing it. So I really look at this as we've got a good group of people that work for this department. I also got a chance to write you a national night out, find some things about you that I won't tell anybody else. That's between you and me. Saul, I want to thank you. You and I have been together for a long time. No, you're not going to drive a police car. Not going to happen. To the council though, I do want to thank you. I think the department has done well under both the last council leadership and yours. We got a new facility, which we really appreciate. And for those of you that know now, what we used to be in is IT now, and so for five or six people being where 80 used to be, we needed the room. Gary Crutchfield, who hasn't been mentioned in a while, I got to thank him for taking a chance on this Midwesterner. When I first chatted with him, I thought, do I want to work for him or not? And I did. And I really enjoyed it, so I appreciate him, gave him the foresight to hire me. And I appreciate Dave coming in after firing his last chief before he left Fife and coming down here, but then contacting me by email and saying, oh, by the way, it's not going to happen down here. And actually sending another person to come and talk to me and say, he's really not that bad of a guy. And he isn't. He's really a great guy to work for. So I really thank you for that. But lastly, I also want to thank the department because again, as I said, we've really got a very caring department. I am amazed, even during the incidents of 2015, how we got a lot of credit, a lot of good things from the department. I get more emails of praise than I do emails of complaint. And to me, that means a lot. We've updated a lot of training. We got a new training facility, well, new, old. It's an old building downtown that we converted to a training center, which has been used for debates and other things politically also. Again, that was something that we had some foresight in to look at, so that now we train far and above and away from any other department in the state of Washington. As Dave mentioned, we're doing accreditation, not just state, but also national. That starts next Monday, in fact, the onsite, or not onsite visit rather, but the online visit. We've also done some changes in hiring, promotion, transfer. Got more community involvement than we ever had before. Our social media has certainly taken off. While I'd like to take credit for our Facebook, believe me, I don't write any of that. I've got some great staff that do and I'm really pleased that. We've also set, I think, a high standard for policing that other departments are starting to emulate. And I think that's something to be proud of for the City of Pasco. So I really want to thank the citizens of Pasco for allowing us, despite the rough times and despite the, I don't say disagreements, but despite the angst that some people had, that we really survived and thrived. And lastly, and she's not here tonight, but my wife of 46 years, Linda, for traveling around with me, and I appreciate it and I thank you.
I don't know if I can come up with any words beyond that, but I would note, and I didn't realize we needed you quite as much as we did need you, Chief. You came along at a perfect time to end your eight years. Sometimes it seems longer, sometimes it doesn't seem that long, but you were exactly what we've needed for our community and to set the professionalism and that sort of Midwestern no-nonsense attitude, particularly with a challenge that we've had, that you did with leadership poise and grace, I think is an example. And as you point out too, can't beat all things to all people, but you've remained true to yourself and to Pasco. I want to thank you and I think all of us will probably want to thank you. Any other thoughts? How about Mr. Martinez? Absolutely.
I can't go without saying something. I'm going to get in the car before April, but, no, I'm just joking. It's been, it's been an honor and a pleasure, Mr. Metzger. You know, in the years that I've been here, I've always tried to make it a point to always be part of a group. There's so many organizations and, you know, from all types of community members, from the faith community all the way down, there's so many organizations that they kill their wounded or they just take their wounded and just put them aside. And I wanted to make it sure that, you know, whatever team I'm on is a team that doesn't do that. And I think through all the experiences that Pasco has had, only since I've been on the council, not to mention the rest of the time, this place has been one of those places where we heal our wounded and we pick them up and we learn from our mistakes and we keep going. And I think you're a great example of that. You didn't give up. I don't know how you didn't because I admire you for not giving up. I've seen the pressure that you were in and the whole staff was in, but you persevered and you, I just don't know how you could have done that without your faith, without the people who were backing you up. And the reason that they did is because you were an honorable man and you were worth saving and worth backing up and worth fighting for. So I just want to say that it's a pleasure and an honor to have a person who can associate with so many different aspects of a community and you did it very well. So thank you very much for the time that you've dedicated for this city, the time that you have sacrificed away from your families and your wife, who is sacrificed, for all the things that you've done for your job and to make things right for the city and it's a better city. You know, from all the past chiefs to you, to reduce our crime rate the way we have in this city, it's unusual and it's unprecedented. And I thank you for that. I thank you for your service, your time. I hope the best for you. I hope God blesses you. Good luck.
I'm going to suggest we not only give Mr. Metzger a round of applause, but we honor him as best we can. So thank you, Mr. Metzger. As Mr. Zabel pointed out, that's bittersweet and that's also something that doesn't end tonight, but a fitting announcement for the end of the year. We get to have you till April and we'll be saying goodbye again, I'm sure. And thank you for the announcement this evening. Mr. Zabel, your floor is still yours, sir.
So I do have, speaking of the end of the year, I do have another thing I wanted to go over. So council closes out, this council closes out its first year. And of course, we started with five new members and all five finished. That's probably statistically significant in itself. But I do want to note so many, I think, very impressive accomplishments. The inclusivity issue became a priority of this council right out of the gate and from there you went to council goals. We developed a plan to build two fire stations. Council authorized an issue in this community homelessness, homeless outreach officer program was authorized and capital improvements in the areas of transportation, utilities, leveraging economic development, improving quality of life. Council was very focused in a number of areas this year. And I think much of what you're focused on moving forward is embodied in the city's first biennial budget, which you approved just earlier tonight. And finally, next year you have the task of laying out a plan for the future of 125,000 population City of Pasco. So a lot of things on your plate, but you've also done a lot from a staff perspective. And I speak for all of us when I say, I think all of us have been very impressed by the demonstrated commitment on council's part and thoughtfulness. We've appreciated the challenges the council's set before us as well as support that you've provided to us all. And I want to say, just say, we're as impressed with you as you are apparently with the chief, so. But no, we're very, on behalf of staff, we, it's been a common theme in our senior staff meetings about all that we're getting accomplished with the council. So thank you very much for a great year.
And to make that full circle, Mr. Zabel, very specifically, the steps that staff took, not only at the beginning of the year, but before the beginning of the year, just after the election, to make this new council feel not only at home, but to be able to hit the ground running is a testament to the dynamic and extra step that you all have taken. So we're all, I think we're hitting on all those cylinders and I think you summarized it well and thank you. Mr. Maloney, you have some thoughts?
I do. You know, I was thinking as we were coming up in this meeting, the fact that, you know, this is our, now officially, our last meeting of this first year here. You know, I was reflecting on it a little bit as I was finishing out my day and preparing for the meeting tonight. And it's been such a genuine pleasure to work with my fellow council members. This has been a heck of a, heck of a heavy lift to have five new council members trying to come up to speed and that resulted in some really, really long meetings. But I've noticed that as the year's gone on, even through heavy topics like our budget, the meetings have gotten a little shorter, a lot shorter. I'm not, anyone run a trail on that? But you know, I, just, Mr. Zabel, in response to you, I'd say, I feel like we really have gotten a lot of good things done for the city this year and really put our mark, for this council's mark, on having this year, but really teeing things up for the future. I think 2019's going to be a heck of a year. We're getting into stride and I think we're going to have a lot of really, really amazing things that are going to start coming up next year that, now that we all know what the heck we're doing, a little better than we did before. And you know, it's really a testament to the quality and professionalism of the staff. And I can't speak highly enough about that. That's why we've been able to accomplish things. That's why we've even known what to accomplish is really the dedication and hard work of the city's staff who's been able to say, hey, this is an area where we have an opportunity or hey, this is something that's not quite going right. We could use a change here. And able to present us with high-quality reports and great recommendations and wonderful amendments to city code, no matter how boring it may seem to someone watching the meeting, you can see the passion that our employees in the city have in all the work they put out. So, you know, I just want to let you know that. And I hope our comments earlier, even regarding salary planning, help echo kind of our thoughts here, is that we really value you. Thank you.
With that, any other thoughts, Mr. Zabel?
Nope, that's it.
Well, do noting, before we, I do know that we're going to have an executive session and the tip, we very likely will adjourn after that, so I would just think about asking our, the folks we serve, which is the public. And we've talked about where we can meet on Monday nights and sometimes more. We still are, we've done a, I think, a good job in 2018 representing the citizens, Pasco, and as well as also, I think, vibrant city within the tri-cities and the region. And think about over the Christmas holidays, what that means to us and the term, the thought of having Merry Christmas and holidays and what it's going to be in store for us for 2019. So with that, I think we've done a well-earned break of actually five weeks in this case because I think January 7th is the first Monday of the new year, so we get a little extra break there. Unless there's of course an emergency in which Mr. Zabel will call a special meeting, we may all have to come down here, but not had that before. With that, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and note that we do have one more item, we do have an executive session. Purpose of an executive session is to establish sales price or lease amount of real estate. No, that meeting will be attended by the city manager, assistant city manager and city attorney. Of course, no action during that session. We'll entertain any action afterwards and with that, after that, we'll adjourn the meeting for the rest of the year and that'll be until about 8:17. So we're adjourned to executive session. So we're adjourned to executive session.